Thank you for that intro and those rules, Flur. Everyone, so great to see you on this forum tonight. I'm Helen, I'll be handling the first half of the questions. So we'll start with opening statements again. All the candidates are running in the Appo at Large District. We will start with Ms. Graham and then we will move to Mr. Kevis. So Ms. Graham, you have one minute for your opening statement.
Hi, good evening, thank you. Helen Tishiba is fine. My name is Tishiba Graham. I live here in Townsend with my two sons and our adorable cockatoo Chewie. I am the Vice President of Operations and Innovation for a healthcare system. I currently sit on the Board of Directors for an organization that focuses on advocacy work for those with intellectual and developmental disabilities. I'm also the second Vice President of our local chapter of our NAACP. In addition to some volunteer work with Caring for Friends. But most importantly, I am running for Appo School Board because I believe that education is the equalizer and impetus to success for all children. More specifically, my platform will focus on special needs advocacy along with school safety and overall student success. Thank you.
Thank you for that opening statement, Tishiba. Mr. Pet Kevis, you have a minute. Oh, you're muted.
How's that? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great. Good evening, I'm Ray Pat Kavis. I'm running for school board because I have two children in the school. I have a 10-year-old son named Jake and a five-year-old daughter named Ava. I'm highly involved in the community with things like MOT Little League Baseball, the Healthy Kids Running Series, the Middletown 5K.
You have to get yourself first.
I'm sorry, all things that give back to the community. Recently, there has been information that came to me by friends that have kids in the high school, which is the violence in the hallways, drugs in the bathrooms. In addition to that, we have 32 open teaching positions that need to be filled. And our test scores are among the lowest one-third in the nation. So I would like to help the Appui-McSchool District remove the violence from our hallways, place the 32 teachers in the open teaching positions, remove the drugs from the bathrooms, and help get our test scores back to where we have a respectable average that competes with the nation. Thank you.
Thank you for those opening statements, both of you. So we are going to move on to the first question. And just so you know, I will read the question out loud, but it will also be put in the Slack so that it can be viewed there. So for question number one, we will start with Tishiba and then move on to Raymond. So question one is, what are a school board member's roles and responsibilities? How does your background fit into this role? How does that role differ from the role of the superintendent or administration? Tishiba, you're first.
Thank you. Simply said, the role of the school board is to create policy and hold the superintendent accountable for implementation. My background fits into this role because of my progressive healthcare experience, more specifically, my acumen as it relates to collective bargaining.
They notice this warning, so I have to apologize, but it automatically goes off my iCloud.
Excuse me, can everyone make sure that they are muted?
My iCloud email is not a part of the Google group.
The moderator controls everything.
Yvonne or Flur, can we mute whoever's unmuted? She is muted. Okay. Sorry about that, Tishiba. We can start that again. Do you need to hear the question again, or are you good to go?
No, I see it here in the chat. I'm good. Thank you so much.
Perfect. Sorry about that.
One more time. The role of the school board is to create policy and hold the superintendent accountable for implementation. My background fits into this role because of my progressive healthcare experience, more specifically, my acumen as it relates to collective bargaining agreements, ability to collaborate, ensure accountability, write policy, and work through challenging situations. In short, the difference is that the superintendent is simply the CEO that is held accountable for student success, and the board works to create policies that are conducive to that said student's success.
Awesome. Thank you for that insert, Tishiba, and for rolling with that. Raymond, it is your turn, and you have a minute.
Great, thank you. You're gonna see that I have through this a little bit of a different style. I'm not gonna read from a teleprompter. I'm gonna answer, I'm gonna answer questions as they come. I don't have prepared statements. However, I have prepared answers in that I've got questions asked me that I've thought about. I've talked to people. What I'm saying is I'm not gonna read my answer, I'm gonna talk about it. So the role of a board member on the school district is first and foremost to implement policy. Second, it's to make sure that that policy is in alignment with the laws of the United States government, the laws of the state of Delaware. Yes, the school board is an oversight committee to the superintendent. And it's also an oversight committee to make sure that the policies and procedures that are in place are being adhered to. And it's also a committee for things that fall outside of the current scope to come back to the school board for open discussion. Because life is an ever-evolving process, and there's certain situations that come up that fall out.
For that answer, that is time. So we are moving on to the second question. Raymond, we will start with you this time. We'll alternate between who starts and who finishes for this forum. So the second question is, how do you view a school board member's role and responsibilities around improving student outcomes, given that our state has a 29% math proficiency rate and a 42% literacy rate? And we fall within the bottom third of the country? Raymond?
Absolutely. So I've had a chance to have conversations with the administrators of the district. I'm not sure if everybody's aware, yes, our scores are in the lower one-third. However, we are using different tests than a lot of the other states are. So whereas we have the SATs are a component of that test scores, other states throughout the United States are using the ACTs. So given that we're on a different testing system than other states, I don't know that those metrics are exactly fair because it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. That's something that needs to be talked about at the state level with the Department of Education of Delaware. Because that precludes businesses from wanting to come to the state of Delaware. Because businesses that come to the state bring families. Those families have children. Those children, those families want to have the best education for. So we need to make sure that we're on an equal playing field when it comes to the tests that are being used. And yes, we do need to get our test up. I'd love our test to be the number one in the nation. But before we can do that, we need to make sure that our tests that are being provided are in alignment with the others.
Thank you for that. That is your minute, Raymond. Tishiba, you have one minute.
Thank you. So the board is simply responsible for setting clear goals and objection objectives for student achievement, allocating resources and funding to support instructional programs, and implementing evidence-based practices that have been proven to produce positive student outcomes. I think it's also important to note that Appo, according to Delaware Report Card, Appo's rates for a 21-22 school year is 51.59% proficiency in ELA and 38.79% in math. To be fair, we can round that up to a fair night 39. So I would say that that's a trend in the right direction, although albeit low, I would still say that it's trending in the right direction in comparison to the state. Thank you.
Thank you both for your answers to question two. So we are moving on to question three now, and Tishiba, this time we will start with you. Question three is, do you believe implicit bias exists in your district? If so, what do you plan to do as a school board member to make sure implicit bias isn't negatively impacting students and staff? Tishiba?
Yes, I do. I think implicit biases are inherent to who we are. And I think a simple way to address it is in the moment. So when you recognize it, you say something, and you create an environment and an opportunity to have an exchange to learn and to acknowledge what has actually just taken place. So simply by calling it out in an amicable manner, I think is the best approach. But also ultimately, it's essential for school board members to be committed to addressing implicit biases and promoting equity and inclusivity at all levels of our district. And simply sitting on the school board allows for that, and it starts with us. We must be the example to address behaviors like that because ultimately our children are adversely affected. Thank you.
Thank you for that answer, Tishiba. Raymond, you have one minute.
Can you repeat the question, please, just or?
It should be in the chat. You should be able to see it there.
I'm just saying for the people that are watching, just.
Again, it's in the chat.
Got it. So does implicit bias exist in our school system? Yes, yes, I believe it does. As a matter of fact, I've had a personal experience with that. When I sat in the chair in front of the Appui-McSchool Board during a question and answer session as one of the candidates being interviewed with questions, there was a statement made that I did not have a chance to address, made by one of the current sitting school board members. The reality of our situation is we need to talk to people. We need to talk to people. We need to listen to what they say before we look at them. The statement that was made was that I would like to, if there was a magic wand that I could wave, what would you do? The school board member answered, I'd use that magic wand to place another school board member up here that had a voice that looked more like mine. I challenged that question. And I was, it was, it was squashed. So I would immediately step to addressing that as a school board member, so we're, that we're on an equal understanding as we move forward. Events need to be addressed.
That is a minute. Thank you for your answer, Raymond. We are moving on now to question number four. Raymond, we will start with you and then move to Tishiba. So question four is, the previous question was about racial and social justice. With this question, we'd like you to think about the needs of our intellectually diverse community. Give one specific example to describe how you would ensure a quality education for all students. For example, gifted and talented, special needs, English language learners, those from diverse cultural backgrounds. Raymond?
Absolutely. So we need to have an all-inclusive learning environment so that our students can learn from one another based on their experiences, where they came from that morning, where they're going to after school when the curriculum and the education is done. However, for an accelerated student, we need to also provide them with an accelerated curriculum so that they stay engaged. They don't get bored and become ultimately a behavior problem. On the other spectrum, the students that face challenges, we need to provide them with a curriculum that moves them along at the appropriate speed, while at the same time allowing those children to interact with one another throughout the course of the day. A great example of that is in the Appui-McSchool District, they have the Unified Basketball Team, which there are folks that have certain challenges, and there's other students, they play together on a team. And that interaction was beautiful to watch as students came together and they won the championship. And we went to an awards banquet recently there. Awards banquet was one of the best things I've been to.
That is, that is a minute. Thank you for your answer. Raymond, Tishiba, you have a minute.
Yes, thank you, Helen. Good question. And in short, this is exactly one of the reasons that I'm running. As someone who has personal experience with special education, I think it's vitally important that we address quality education for all students. I think ensuring that we have quality education, more specifically for special needs children, as it requires a comprehensive approach that includes individualized planning, inclusive education, as well as highly qualified teachers, and most importantly, family and community engagement. I think all of these are certainly intertwined, but for me, one of the most important components of it is the individualized education plan along with family and community involvement. My focus would be to equip families with the resources and knowledge needed to actively participate in their child's education plan. That's where the changes occur. That's where the advocacy occurs, and that's where we learn from each other. So combining community and family with the IEP process.
Gosh, thank you. Thank you for those answers, both of you. We are moving on to question number five, and Tishiba, we will start with you first. Question five is, the hosts of this forum strongly support safe and supportive schools. The Delaware Department of Education district-level data shows that black, brown, and special education students are disproportionately disproportionately represented in discipline referrals, suspensions, and arrests. What other steps beyond existing policies should the school district take to ensure fair and equitable treatment for all students? Tishiba?
Yes, sure. So current policy leverages restorative practices. As someone who is very comfortable with policy and procedure, part of that is trying to determine its efficacy. So for me, I would start with an equity audit. It's something that, a process that I'm very familiar with, and we need to use that audit to identify where we still have gaps. I think as a school district, there's been commitments to addressing equity and disparities, but I think it's fair to say that we still have them. And so as we are leveraging an audit, we, from there, we can learn what we need to do better because the audit will help us to develop strategies to address the equities, to address the gap in resources, so we can address the, address students' needs comprehensively. So for me, I would start with an equity audit in conjunction with the current policies that focus on leveraging, leveraging restorative practices. Thank you.
Thank you for that insert, Tishiba. Raymond, do you have one minute?
Absolutely.
From my school board thing.
Can we silence that mic and sort of?
Yeah, please.
Yes, once, are we muted now? Sounds like it. Okay, Raymond, you are good to start now.
Yes, the statistics simply do show that there are more black and brown students that have higher levels of disciplinary action taken against them. So I feel this is a spot where equity could certainly be put into place. Equity is the access to information. The Appui-McSchool District has a 60-page student code of conduct. One of the questions I would have is, how many students are actually in a position to read that? How many students have read it? How many students even know that it exists? I would have, at the beginning of each school year, one of the first things all students would do is they would go over, in a classroom setting, the code of conduct and the expectations that the school district has for a child to make sure that there's a full understanding of it. Once you understand the expectations as a student, then you can hold the student accountable to what their expectations are. And I believe that that should be the first week of the curriculum, is to understand the expectations of being a student in the actual school district.
Thank you for that answer. Raymond? So we are now moving on to question number six. Raymond, you will go first, and then we will move to Tishiba. So question six is, the hosts of this forum strongly support family engagement and education. What is your position on continuing to offer a virtual option for school board meetings? Provide an example of how you value community and family engagement. Raymond, you're up first.
Absolutely. I feel that everything that we should do, we do, should be virtual. Not just school board meetings, it's about access. So from the ability to watch this meeting from your home, which a lot of folks are doing tonight, that's very important. The ability to not only watch this meeting, but the school board meetings, yes. It might not be aware, but Appui-McSchool District has had a virtual learning situation that kind of was a rollover from COVID. And there was a group of families that were enrolled in that program. They were getting a great level of results from that program, and it was just recently discontinued. It's, it's like a bridge between homeschooling and going to school because it's a curriculum provided by the school district, but not necessarily a full homeschooling platform. That was in place until just recently where it was announced that it would not be continued moving forward. So not only do I think we should have the school district meetings in a form like this, but we should also continue to have the education in a form like this to support our families that want to use the school district's curriculum, but a technology.
Awesome. Thank you for that answer. That is time. Tishiba, you have one minute.
Yes, I think we should certainly continue to offer the virtual option. I can speak to that personally. I have certainly benefited from the opportunity to engage in school board meetings virtually. I think I can, you know, I can certainly appreciate the organic interactions that occur face-to-face, but I do think it's incumbent upon us to ensure that we're able to meet our community's needs and offering virtual options does just that, you know, the community in which people have work or family obligations, transportation challenges, or even disabilities. So for me, yes, I would be a huge proponent of keeping our meetings hybrid, in-person, and remote, virtual. And lastly, I think community and family engagement is important for school board members, more specifically to actively seek out feedback and perspectives and experiences. What I can tell you is that this campaigning process, I have engaged with so many families, just one earlier today, just about different challenges and what it means for them to be able to outreach us.
Awesome. Thank you. That is time, Tishiba. Thank you, Tishiba and Raymond, for your answers to the first half of our questions. For the second half of the questions, I'm gonna turn it over to my co-moderator, Kim. Kim, the floor is now yours.
Hi, candidates. We're gonna start with question number seven, and with that, we're going to start with Tishiba. The question is, the hosts of this forum strongly support laws around common sense gun laws, given that there has been an unprecedented number of school shootings in 2023. Please elaborate on your views on guns and safe storage and how this can affect the increased violence in our communities near schools.
Thank you, Kim. I think that's simple. As someone who has the support of Moms Demand Action, which is an organization that focuses on encouraging a culture of responsible gun ownership, my answer is simple. It's, you can certainly have your guns. Just be safe. Just be responsible. Just store them appropriately. And I think this is a consistent thought across many facets. As I mentioned earlier, I work in healthcare. As part of our routine screening for our patients, we ask them, do you have guns in the home and are they safely stored? That's the biggest concern for us, is just to make sure that guns are safely stored. So ultimately, gun safety is a shared responsibility within our communities as we look to eliminate gun violence in our schools, in our schools and communities as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're going to toss it over to Raymond. Raymond, you have one minute.
Absolutely. I feel that gun owners have the highest level of responsibility to keep their guns stored safely in their homes. I also feel that the school district has a responsibility to put measures to keep the guns out of the schools. We can look at a variety of different statistics done by different organizations. The one thing that they agree upon is not all crimes are committed with guns that were legally purchased. So the access to guns is not necessarily guns that were bought legally. There's guns that are bought on the streets. There's guns that were procured in other ways. The school district has to have ways to make sure that they're kept off the property, off the campuses and out of the classrooms and hallways. And that was demonstrated, we've had two incidences in the last six months where guns have made their way onto our campuses and put us in a national spotlight. It's unacceptable. So it's not just the gun owners at home, it's also the school district needs to put measures in place to keep the guns off of our campuses and out of our buildings.
Thank you for your answers. With question eight, we're going to start with Raymond. There has been a lot of discussions around banning books and critical race theory at school board meetings all over the country. What are your views around this, and how will you implement policy to reflect it?
So critical race theory is, has become a real hot topic across the country. And the reality is, I don't think most people understand it. To say, should we be teaching critical race theory? That's an advanced topic. That's usually taught in law schools or advanced levels of, of master's degree education. It's not something that's taught in schools to high school kids or grade school kids. The concept is, it's a relationship between geography, demographics, and social structure like laws or rules and regulations put in place by, say, a homeowners association. It's a triangulation. So if you want to look at it from a big picture, critical race theory is a tool like binoculars that you look at something from afar. If you want to have a very close look, critical race theory is a tool like a microscope that you use to look at things up close. Critical race theory in and of itself is not a bad thing. The implementation and how it's used, just like any other tool, is really the discussion that needs to be had. When it comes to the books, the reality is, I don't think anybody's reading those books anyway. We gotta keep kids off of video games as opposed to, you know, worrying about.
Thank you for your answer.
Thanks.
Tishiba, you have one minute.
Yeah, so I do not think that we should ban books. I support teacher autonomy and want to ensure that, that they are able to teach our students a robust curriculum. And I want books in our school district to make sure that they're providing our students with accurate, honest, and informed understanding of history, sciences, and culture. I know this may shock a few people, but I'm going to say I slightly agree with what Ray just said as it relates to CRT. That is a collegiate-level course that is not, and therefore it's not applicable to what, you know, our schools right now. As a PhD student, it's something that I have studied. And so at this point for our students, it's not applicable. So I don't think it's, you know, a topic for us to discuss here, critical race theory. So thank you.
Thank you for your answers. Tishiba, we're going to start with you for question number nine. School boards all over the nation are adopting policies around protecting LGBTQ+ and transgender students. What are your views on this policy, and where do you see the school's role in this area?
My view is simple, and that it's the goal of the school board to ensure that we're creating safe and inclusive environments for our LGBTQ+ and transgender students as it's essential to promoting the well-being and academic success for all students. I think by adopting policies and practices that support these, that support our students, promotes education and awareness around LGBTQ+ as well as transgender issues. Schools and, simply said, schools and school boards play a critical role in creating a more equitable and just society for all of our students. So I just want to be clear that our school board is, should be inclusive and focusing on all of our students, obviously, including LGBTQ+ and our transgender population.
Thank you. Raymond, to you, you have one minute.
Absolutely. This is another hot topic across the country. And I've had conversations, the main thing I would look at as a school board member is, what is our situation in our schools? Notwithstanding that it's a national issue, but how, how are we dealing with it? Is this an issue for us right now? So the first thing to look at is, there are five federal laws that protect a lot of different minority parties. LGBTQ is one of those. There's also an additional overlay of state laws that protect those same classes. I run a real estate company. I'm constantly in training for fair housing and anti-discrimination policies, and I'm required to upkeep certificates on those courses. So when it comes to anti-discrimination, the laws are in place. What we need to look at is the application of those laws. As a school board member, what I would look at is, what are the federal laws? What are the state laws? How are they being applied currently? And if there's a deviation from federal and state law, that's what a policy needs to be put in place for the people that are deviating from that law, not in addition to the policy.
Thank you. That is your time. For question number 10, we're going to start with you, Raymond. Mental health continues to be a tremendous issue for students and staff in our schools. What is your view on social, emotional learning resources and schools providing these resources to students? Where do you think there is room for improvement?
You know, this is, this is another topic that's, you know, nationwide that we're talking about. The reality is, I grew up with social, emotional learning, but not under that title. I grew up with Mr. Rogers. And if you Google this, if you Google "social, emotional learning" and Mr. Rogers, you'll see that he's actually the father of it. It later came to have a different name, but what it is, it's about feelings. It's about talking about your feelings in an open format, being comfortable with your feelings, understanding the feelings of others. He was one of the first people during the civil rights movement to have a black man come on his show and get into a pool. They took their feet in the pool together to show children that we're all the same and we can swim in the same pools. That was one of the first big moments in this movement was with a TV child star, Mr. Rogers, who is really the father of this movement. And we've all been blessed to be in his presence.
Thank you, Raymond.
Tishiba, I'm gonna toss that over to you.
Yeah, so I, I'm sorry.
You have one minute, sorry.
The promotion of SEL or social, emotional learning, the school board has responsibility for ensuring that we have provision of resources and, and to support it as a critical aspect of creating safe and supportive learning environments for all students. And I think it's important to note that Appo currently has their own counselors as well as third-party resources that they will allow for resources to come into the school and visit with your child, of course, at the expense of the family. But more importantly, I think it demonstrates a commitment to this concept of social, emotional learning. And I think lastly, the school, school and school boards can play a key role in promoting students' mental health and well-being overall. And so I think as decisions and policies are being made, that we need to keep this at the forefront. And so I think as decisions and policies are being made, that we need to keep this at the forefront of our minds as we're creating and, um, implementing policies and, and procedures for our children. This is a key hot topic. And it's all, it's incumbent upon all of us to address it comprehensively as a community, as, um, stakeholders with a vested interest.
Thank you. That is your time. Uh, so with question eleven, we're going to start with, uh, Toshiba. The school to prison pipeline seems to be increasing. What policies would you recommend to end this? And what are your views on SROs, seen, excuse me, student resource officers? And how they impact this?
So interestingly enough, the organization, um, in which I sit on the board of directors for that is committed to, um, focusing on intellectual and developmental, uh, disabilities. We have a subcommittee specifically for the school to prison pipeline and my, I would say that I wouldn't necessarily be in favor of introducing new policies immediately, but rather, um, assessing the efficacy of current policies. I think it's important for us to understand our starting point and where we are and to identify gaps before we just start changing random policies and procedures. We need to know where we are and where we stand currently. Um, and as it relates to the SROs that are currently in the school, I wouldn't be, um, necessarily a proponent of in, introducing additional ones, but rather working collaboratively, collaboratively with our current SROs um, to ensure that we are addressing violence, well, discouraging violence through different training sessions, PSAs, collateral, other resources. And I think lastly, just allowing for the efficacy analysis to dictate our steps.
Thank you. That is. Raymond, we're going to toss that over to you. You have one minute.
Absolutely. For me, this is the key element of the entire moment that we have at hand. Um, there is violence in our hallways on a regular basis. I have co- had conversations with numerous parents, students, and teachers. It's an ongoing issue. There are videos out there that are being shared by the students on a regular basis. We need to stop the violence in our hallways. The violence in our hallways ultimately is why there's a school to prison pipeline. It's because the policies that are put in place at the school level are not being adhered to the same way that the criminal justice system is. This criminal justice system is not going to be as forgiving as we are at the school level. So we need to remove the violence from the schools and set proper expectations in our hallways and in our bathrooms. Um, when it comes to SROs, there's one per school, two per school. We, not to say that we need more, but we need a higher level of interaction. This could be a great positive experience for the first time that somebody deals with a law enforcement officer. I would also be in favor of having business members walk the halls.
Thank you for your answer. Uh, these, this is the last question, candidates, and thank you. So take a deep breath. This is the last one. Question number twelve, we're going to start with you, Raymond. Recently, there is a lot of talk around charter schools and their growth in our state. What are your views on school choice? Please elaborate on how you view charter schools.
Charter schools are an alternative. Um, what makes them unique is that they do not have to adhere to the same guidelines that the public schools do. And for a lot of folks, I think that's what makes them very attractive. Is that they can find a charter school that's in alignment with their values, um, as a family. When you put your child in public school, you have to deal with the fact that there is a systemic series of rules in place that can't be deviated from. So I would like to see more and more charter schools because it allows for a proper match between the family and what they're looking for, no different than when we have a virtual experience with our school district. That was a great fit for a lot of families. So in our world, which is becoming ever changing, finding the right fit for a family and for a school district to provide the other end of that fit so that the student and the education have a proper match to put our children forward in the best light possible so that we can make this world a better place.
Thank you, Raymond. Toshiba, you have one minute.
Yeah, I am, I'm not opposed to school choice. I think, you know, ultimately, our goal as school board members is to do what's best for the child. You know, who can argue that? I was actually just talking to a family member the other day who, um, reached out to me, just sharing that she was making the decision to transfer her child at the end of the school year, um, despite the child only being in sixth grade, uh, just to a school outside of our district because it met her child's needs better than our school district could. And I think ultimately, for me, at the end of the day, it's about student success. I don't think any of us can argue uh, the importance of students' needs and what makes them successful. So I'm not opposed to, uh, school choice for anyone um, at this point in our school district.
Thank you, candidates.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you. Well, that concludes the, um, organized part of the forum. We did have two questions chat, which I will now pose to, um, both candidates, and you have thirty seconds each to answer the two questions. The first is, um, and Toshiba, I will start with you. What are the candidates' views on how school libraries and school librarians contribute to learning and how they help students meet national information literacy standards?
I think school librarians are, are critical to the success of our children learning to read and just overall learning. I can recall as a young child going to, spending plenty of time, um, in the library. So for me, I would say that the librarians are equal or on par to what our teachers do every single day in the classroom. So simply allowing for our children to have that library time and to ensure that they have, um, time away to learn and focus on what's at hand is critically important to the overall success for our children.
Thank you, Toshiba. And Raymond?
Absolutely. A great librarian is key to education. And I would equate this in a very simple term to, if you go to a Burger King, you walk in and you pick something off of the menu. That's your basic old school librarian, which is what can I help you find? Versus going to a high end dining establishment where they recommend something. But if you know and what, and have a relationship with a student and what they like, you can recommend, hey, I know you like this. This is something you should read. Here's a platform you should be engaging. Cause it's not just books anymore. But we're, we're engaging technology.
Raymond, that's time. And the last chat question is, and I will start with Raymond this time. How do we best support, empower, and assist teachers to discipline and enforce the expectations? We all know the problems that exist with violence, but how do we help assist with them, discipline? And what can we do to that end?
Well, when it comes to teachers, they're not bouncers. And that's, that's the way that we're, and when I say bouncers, I mean, bouncers in a bar. I've seen videos where teachers are breaking up fights in the hallways. That is absolutely unreasonable. That's the reason our teachers are leaving our district and going to other schools because they can get paid more and they don't have to work in that type of an environment. Our teachers are there to educate. They're not there to be disciplinarians. They need to identify when disciplinary actions are needed and elevate that to the proper region in the school, whether it's the, the resource officer or the principal.
Thank you. That's time. And Toshiba, the same question.
Yeah, I would simply say, um, similar to what Raymond has said, um, I think it's our teacher's role to teach and that's what we need them to do. So I think as it relates to violence and trying to address it, I think we need to introduce additional resources and training for our children. I, I really feel that uh, the violence, the, the root of it is conflict resolution. And how can we teach our children to really leverage and hone and develop those skills? So for me, it's more about empowering our children, not necessarily our teachers to address some of those behaviors in order for the teachers to do what we pay them.
Thank you. That's time.
Thirty seconds is difficult, Flair.
Yeah, it's very difficult to do thirty seconds. All right. Well, this is your time, uh, Toshiba and Raymond, and I will start with you, Toshiba. You have one minute to conclude and wrap up tonight.
Yeah, so I would just simply say thank you, uh, for your time tonight. This has been a great, um, forum. We've had quite a bit of dialogue and discussion. I think at this time, hopefully you all have learned a little bit more about me outside of social media and outside of conversations that we've had, uh, perhaps personally. Um, I would encourage you to continue to do your research, look at my platform. You can reach out to me. Um, my email address is also on there, and I think most importantly, vote Toshiba Graham on May ninth and continue to engage with me. I look forward to it. And thank you all again.
Thank you. Raymond, you have one minute.
Yes, thank you. The one thing I'm going to commit to is we're going to remove the violence from our hallways and the drugs from, from our bathroom. That is the biggest item that I have in my world when it comes to the parents that I've already talked to. I've talked to teachers. I've talked to students. I've talked to people within the community, and the biggest concern is the violence. It is absolutely unacceptable. And the biggest thing that we need to do is first admit and identify that it's there. And then engage people. How can we solve it? We need to talk about it. We need to talk about what's going on and realize that it's not going to go away. This is a nationwide crisis. We also need to support our teachers. We need to fill the thirty-two vacant positions that we have right now. We can't have great teachers leaving the district. We need to pay our teachers more. They can go across the border in New Jersey and make ten thousand dollars more. That's not okay. Our teachers need to stop breaking up fights. They need to get paid more. They need to teach. And we need qualified teachers sitting in classes, not substitutes. Thank you.
Thank you so much to the both of you. Well, friends, that concludes our Apple Quinomic School Board candidate forum. As mentioned at the start of the forum, there are three candidates running for one at large contested seat in the Apple Quinomic School District, uh, which voters may select just one. Multiple attempts were made to invite all three candidates to tonight's forum, but only two of them are here with us tonight. Please remember, rock the vote on Tuesday, May the ninth, and if you can, take another soul to the poll with you. The polls are open from seven AM until eight PM. And remember that the polling places for school board elections are not the same as a general election poll. So you may want to visit www dot vote Delaware dot org to find out where your polling place is. Take care and have a great night.